Can I recognise you and I recognise the work that's been done over the last nine months, not only by yourselves but also by the support staff we have here in council. Can I also recognise those who are watching this budget meeting by live streaming, but particularly to those people who are in the room here today as we put forward our plan, our financial plan and our operational plan for the coming year. Can I begin by acknowledging the Aboriginal parties whose songlines traverse these lands we meet on today, the Western Waka Waka, the Gible, the Jarrarwarr and the Bigamble peoples? And can I pay my respects to their elders past, present and emerging, for they hold the knowledge, the rich traditions and the bold ambitions of Australia's first people? We have an apology today from councillor O'Shea, that has already been recorded and recognised. There are no other apologies, there would not be any declaration of interest I would imagine. So we'll move immediately to item three, the adoption of the 2021-22 operational plan. Rosie, would you come forward please?
Thank you and good morning Mr Mayor, councillors, general managers, officers and those in the gallery and watching at home or online. I present to you today the proposed 2021-22 operational plan for your consideration. I must recognise and thank all officers for their collaboration and inputs during the development of their operational plan across the last several months. The operational plan is not only aligned to our budget, proposed budget to be adopted today also, but it also highlights our social responsibility and ensures our region livability. The operational plan intends to provide evidence of the delivery of our 2019-2024 corporate plan and our goals being people, place, sustainability, prosperity and performance. This year marks the third year or the halfway mark for our current corporate plan. It should be noted that the actions, milestones and KPIs have been set with normal operations in mind. So what does this mean? It means that some of our actions, milestones and KPIs are stretched targets. They're targets that are aligned to our previous years and those of normal full operations. These will be monitored against unknown impacts with councillors via adoption able to change our expectations should that need to be done throughout the year. I today present to you the 2021-22 operational plan for your consideration and open for any comment or question.
Any questions at this point councillor McDonald?
Thank you very much Mr Mayor and through you to Rosie, thank you very much indeed for presenting this today. Just remind councillors and thank councillors for the robust discussions we've had in regard to formulating the corporate plan and the operational plan and indeed last year's discussions moving into this year. And last year being challenging for many reasons known to all of us and indeed our community. But a reminder that this operational plan under the local government regulation 2012 does allow council for amendments of their operational plan at any time throughout the financial year, which indeed we did quarterly last financial year or this year. So that is a reminder and it's something that councillors and the operational arm of council will certainly keep in mind. There's some 179 actions which reflect the corporate plan and Rosie's quite clearly set those out. People, place, sustainability, prosperity and performance. There's some 347 milestones and there's 379 KPIs that this council gets to monitor each quarter and as I say have the opportunity to amend at any given time throughout the year. But Mr Mayor and councillors, I'm sure you all agree that this amount of work and undertaking is certainly large. And to that note, I would like to publicly thank Rosie, as Rosie Buggers, the acting manager of service delivery and sustainability for your leadership Rosie over the formation of the operational plan, but also acknowledge other members of your team, Troy Beecham, Alina Meyer, Joel Atwood, Maddie Suzalka, Paul Reynolds and Andrea Gatfield, all of which have spent time in this chamber explaining the operational plan. I'd also like to acknowledge obviously all senior officers, managers and general managers who ensure that their components of the operational plan are aligned to planned activities, address risk and are aligned to the annual budget being developed. With those words, Mr Mayor, I'm more than happy to move the operational plan for 2122.
Do we have a second for the operational plan councillor Shawne? Any comments around the room? If not, I will put that to the vote, those in favour. Thank you very much, that's carried.
My fellow councillors, staff, ladies and gentlemen, I'm very pleased to be able to table the Twumba Regional Council's 2021-22 operational plan. I present today's documents detailing our forward schedule of capital works and operational programmes with far greater confidence than we had 12 months ago. Last year's budget was framed amid great uncertainty caused by the early phase of the global coronavirus pandemic. Governments and businesses were forced to adjust their plans in that desperate time. Australia, particularly Queensland and also our region have so far escaped the dire health problems that have afflicted many other parts of the world. As a result, we have been spared of the worst effects of the economic and social consequences related to the pandemic. I particularly want to place on record our thanks to the health workers and the emergency services personnel and our community support agencies for their extraordinary work over the past year and their ongoing efforts to keep us, the residents of this region, this state and this nation safe. While no one can accurately predict the course of the coronavirus, council has managed to continue working in accordance with our long-term financial parameters to ensure we continue to budget for essential capital works programmes and services that support our communities for the coming year and well into the future. This budget is the result of nine months of deliberations drawing on the combined talent of council's financial services team in collaboration with all operational areas across council. I particularly want to thank my colleagues for their input over the past year that ensured we kept all our essential services open and functioning. Our team and our role and responsibility is very much to our community and our team approach has kept the focus on delivering for our community. We have learnt a great deal about tailoring our services to meet our residents' desires in a very challenging year. This highlights what can be achieved by us working together. I'm proud of how council's operational efforts have supported our community. In our role as community builders, I'm proud to announce that today the Twumba Regional Council is delivering a $551 million financial plan that will ensure we maintain and upgrade existing services and facilities while planning for a bright future in one of Queensland's most productive and desirable areas. I am positive that today's program will build on our previous year's economic stimulus packages that were designed to complement state and federal governments' economic relief measures to help our community. Council's solid financial footing has allowed us to develop a $187.1 million capital program along with an operating budget component of $364 million. We are mindful of maintaining a responsible and calculated financial approach in our budget planning and our budget delivery. A capital allocation of $91.8 million for asset renewal in this budget emphasizes council's strong focus on investing in future renewal programs across our extensive water, wastewater and road network, plus on other community assets to look after what we have built in the past. Council has a legal and a moral obligation to maintain its existing infrastructure and our ability to manage our $5.4 billion asset base across our 13,000 square kilometres is a key performance indicator by which we are judged by the Queensland Audit Office and of course more broadly and ultimately by the Queensland Parliament. In addition to the $66.7 million is set aside for upgrade projects, while $28.6 million has been allocated for new capital projects right across our region. We have a responsibility to plan for maintenance and upgrades to our existing infrastructure to guarantee the long-term viability of essential services to our residents. We are mindful that every new asset comes with its own ongoing maintenance costs. Council has considered balancing out lays on renewals and upgrade programs with the demonstrated need for new facilities and infrastructure. As a result, there is a keen focus around timely delivery of projects listed in our annual capital works program. Council's overall operation and capital expenditure parameters are based on our 10-year long-term financial sustainability plan, which is not only adopted by council but it's also overseen by the Department of Local Government, Queensland Treasury Corporation and of course the Queensland Audit Office. The long-term financial sustainability plan is a forecasting tool that council uses to ensure set financial parameters are maintained in the short and long term, thereby ensuring ongoing financial sustainability. The plan is continually revised to track council's financial progress as well as being used to undertake scenario analysis for annual budget developments, budget reviews, capital works programming and operational services delivery assessment. Council will deliver the balance of the project under our dedicated $50 million pandemic response investment program valued at $17.1 million in the balance. We are scheduling future projects to ensure our local workforce can still bid for and deliver these works. Council designed this program of works to complement, not compete with other private projects. Stimulating local employment is one of the most constructive and immediate ways that council can help revive and strengthen our regional community. We have spent $19 million or 90% of the total expenditure to date with local suppliers on the pandemic response investment program. Last year's move to enhance our procurement policy in order to offer local firms the best chance to do business with us continues to pay dividends. We are committed to working with our local suppliers. The current financial year to May 2021, council has spent $137 million with local suppliers. This equates to 51% of our total expenditure with additional payments to be made in June. Budget planning in line with our long-term financial sustainability plan has enabled council to deliver a 2.5% increase in our general rate. This sort of planning has allowed council to deliver a consistent average general rate increase for the past seven years. This is a measured and responsible rate rise with a net overall increase in rates and charges of 2.76% for an urban residential property. This means that most residential rate payers will have an increase of $91.43 a year or $1.76 per week after discount, which includes all rates and charges. Today's budget is the result of consistent planning employed by this council over the past 13 years to ensure that we have strong financial footing to enable future councils to confidently service our growing region with added financial strength to counter unforeseen events like the coronavirus pandemic and the floods that we had some 10 years ago. Going into 2021-22 financial year, we are budgeting for an operating surplus of $783,168. The Queensland Treasury Corporation has maintained council's credit rating as sound with a neutral outlook and in local government land that's a good space to be. The budget reflects the priorities outlined in council's operational plan 2122 financial year and our corporate plan 2019 to 2024. Very few organisations deliver the range of services that local governments provide for their customers every day. Safe drinking water, sewage, rubbish collection to roads, parks and a host of amenities such as libraries, galleries and community and cultural centres, to a range of planning activities and services that safeguard public health, safeguard safety and also amongst many other opportunities to look after our community. In the coming year, the major areas of capital expenditure will include $82.69 million on roads, bridges, footpaths, bikeways and drainage projects, $38.52 million on water projects, $16.31 million on wastewater projects, $6.19 million on waste services, $17.22 million for parks and recreation projects, $22.14 million for community services and facilities, libraries and cultural services and property services, $4.03 million for business strategy and operations. Planning for long-term water security is an imperative for our growing region. Supplying safe drinking water to all residents is an essential and a non-negotiable service. Striking the balance between ensuring water security and affordability is a key consideration for our region's medium and long-term water solutions. In addition to supplying residential water, council is investigating viable water supply options to support business and industry, particularly for major investments such as the medicinal cannabis, other large-scale shedded horticultural operations that will be planned, that are planned in fact for the Twumba trade gateway. We need to harness more efficient water use and we need also to be extra vigilant about our water management. A focus on regional water security will help us realise growth opportunities that are emerging in agriculture, added value products, advanced manufacturing and alternate energy operations. Viable water supply options will ensure we cater for growth and contribute to the state and to the national economy. Council in the coming year will seek public input on aspects of our new planning scheme which will guide how land is used and developed for the next 20 years. This work, under the Twumba Region Futures banner, also delivers key strategic planning strategies that will guide population growth and future job opportunities. Our region has seen considerable growth since the adoption of the current scheme in 2012 with major projects such as the Twumba Wellcamp Airport, the $1.6 billion Twumba Second Range Crossing, which is now operational, and these will be complemented in the coming years by the construction of the Melbourne to Brisbane inland rail. This of course is in addition to the ongoing expansion in areas such as the Twumba Trade Gateway and other areas of the region that are attracting new and emerging industries and development. Council is dedicated to facilitating growth across this region. Infrastructure charges are one of the levers available to council to encourage development that aligns with our strategic objectives. A Twumba CBD incentive is in place to encourage substantial development in our CBD and this incentive contributed to the development of the Oaks Hotel area. A new industrial development incentive was introduced in late 2020 and it has recently been implemented to encourage the creation of new industrial lots and/or industrial development. A township-specific incentive is encouraging the growth of our regional areas with discounts provided to developers within specified areas in and around nominated district centres. Council will continue to consider financially responsible mechanisms that are available to attract new developments that contributes to our regional economy. I am extremely confident that our continued investment from the private sector across different sectors of our economy will underpin jobs that will be a vital component of restoring and continuing our growth trends. There are some very positive signs emerging on the employment front in this region based on the Queensland government's figures. Our region has recorded the lowest unemployment across the state of Queensland for March and April in 2021 with the current figures standing at 4.4% compared with the April state average of 6.1%. But equally pleasing is the fall in youth unemployment rate that has seen the figures fall from a September high in 2020 of 27.2% to an equal second lowest in Queensland now in April 2021 of 9.7%. Council will continue to work with our economic business organisations to progress plans across our towns, the Twumba CBD and in fact the entire region. The imminent announcement related to major projects involving the council of mayors in South East Queensland, COMSEC, could have untold benefits for our region and for Queensland. The Brisbane 2032 Olympics and Paralympic bid late last week took another giant step forward when the International Olympic Committee Executive Board voted to send the proposal to the full vote of the IOC in Tokyo in July this year. There ought to be a measure of excitement in South East Queensland as a result of that. COMSEC also awaits the final decision on the SEQ city deal. The city deal is a rolling funding agreement between tiers of government to develop a pipeline of investment over 15 to 20 years to address population challenges and boost of course the recovery from COVID-19. The SEQ city deal spanning 20 years, more than $3 million residents and 11 council will be the most ambitious and far-reaching city deal ever attempted in Australia. The city deal has the potential to facilitate new funding agreement that could deliver projects and infrastructure that the individual council members alone could not achieve and in the particular case of Twumba, let's look forward to one day having a fast rail as a result of city deal. In the past financial year to May, council has received more than $26.3 million in grants, in subsidies and contribution from state and federal governments. While we as a community are very grateful for these contributions, it reinforces how dependent local government is on external funding. Council has framed this budget when funding from higher levels of government is more difficult to source. Our task as a local government is to provide the community's essential services in an economically responsible way. I again join with mayors from right across Australia to repeat our call for appropriate and equitable funding allocations from the higher levels of government to support council's ongoing and rolling out as we roll out and provide the infrastructure that's so desperately needed across our region. The council of mayors, Darling Downs and South West, continue to back the Australian Local Government Association's campaign calling for a fixed 1% share of commonwealth tax revenue to aid long-term financial planning. Restoring this non-competitive funding stream would improve council targeted budget planning and offer greater operational efficiency. Local government doesn't have the resources to shoulder the full cost of essential infrastructure to our growing communities in addition to meeting our residents' growing expectations across our other activities. We will continue to advocate for our fair share of funding to achieve our community goals and ambitions. Council is determined to capitalize on our current strong financial position. Our region boasts unlimited prospects, an enviable lifestyle with leading health and education resources across safe and unwelcoming community. education resources across safe and unwelcoming community. I particularly want to thank some people today for the support they have given. Can I thank the Deputy Mayor, Finance and Business Strategy Committee Chair, councillor McDonald, for the work that's been done in that portfolio, together with his portfolio leader, Kerry Shine. Council's Acting General Manager of Finance and Business Strategy, Anne-Marie Johnson, for the work that she's done. Acting Manager of Service Delivery and Sustainability, Rosie Budd, for the concerted effort during our budget and operational programmes. But ladies and gentlemen, this is an organisation that employs eighteen hundred people and many people have made a contribution, a very worthwhile contribution in fact, as part of the teams I've just mentioned, to where we are today. And can I thank you, one and all, for the work that you've done. Your assistance is greatly appreciated, along with the work of my colleagues here in this room who have worked together for nine months. The budget, ladies and gentlemen, comes down after nine months of hard work, nine months of deliberation, nine months of prioritisation and nine months of trying to do the very best we can do to service this wonderful community we are honoured to serve. I'm very confident that our combined services will ensure that we remain a destination of choice for families, for business investors and for tourists, and will allow future residents to seize opportunities for a very positive future in the Toowoomba region. Thank you very much.
I'll now hand over to councillor McDonald.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, his worship. And can I please start by acknowledging you and my fellow councillor colleagues, acknowledging you all on the professional, respectful and inclusive approach that we've shared in the formation of this proposed budget. During this nine month process, it has crystallised my belief that we have eleven elected representatives, each with a heart that clearly beats for the benefit of the community we serve and for that I'm sincerely grateful to be part of. If there were two words that best described the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two Toowoomba Regional Council budget, they would be carefully optimistic. Careful as we continue to navigate our way through the health, social and economic challenges of COVID nineteen and optimistic that as a region, our diverse economy and supportive community have been the cornerstone for a strong recovery. Council is indeed committed to delivering a budget that meets its long term financial sustainability commitments while balancing the needs of a growing region. One of the key priorities for this council over the last twelve months and it continues in the coming financial year is our local support to business and local spend. The mayor elaborated on the pandemic response from last year, but in addition to that and the continued rollout of the pandemic response, we will continue to look at ways we can increase our overall local spend with council setting itself a target of sixty percent. Pardon me. The mayor did mention that as of thirty first of May, fifty one percent of council's supplier spend was with local suppliers, equating to one hundred and thirty seven million dollars invested into our local economy. Over the past year, we have made permanent changes to our procurement policy to ensure more money is kept within the region and we will continue to look for further opportunities to increase our local spend. As a council, we remain committed to the local government principle of sustainable development and management of assets and infrastructure and delivery of effective services. Our community's expectations to the local government, expectations and our expenses are rising, but despite this, councillors have worked closely with the council's executive leadership team to deliver a responsible budget. And that's why we have once again implemented a two point five percent general rates increase this coming financial year, following our long term financial sustainability model. In addition to this, there will be a two point five percent increase in separate charges and a two point four percent increase in wastewater. Our water policy also focuses on our long term financial sustainability and has been through extensive modelling to ensure the water and wastewater business continues to head towards full cost recovery. Residents connected to the Toowoomba Bulk Water Supply will see an increase of three point four percent to their access and consumption charges, while non-residential users will see an increase of four point four percent. There will be a six point one percent increase for both residential and non-residential users for those having access to the non-Toowoomba Bulk Supply. As the mayor mentioned, it is anticipated or estimated that there will be, in all charges, an increase of two point seven percent for rates and charges or around about one dollar seventy six per week for the average urban residential property. Overall, as the mayor has mentioned, the proposed budget for twenty one, twenty two financial year is five hundred and fifty one million dollars. One hundred and eighty seven million of that is capital program and the balance, three hundred and sixty four million, is operational. As part of the capital projects, twenty eight point six million has been allocated towards new, sixty six point seven million on upgrade and importantly, ninety one point eight million dollars on renewals. And again, as the mayor mentioned, renewals of our capital is certainly one of the focuses again this year. With an asset base of five point four billion dollars and a budgeted depreciation of one hundred and six million dollars, council needs to ensure there is a strong emphasis placed on the renewal of its assets. The mayor also mentioned that one of our key financial measures is the asset sustainability ratio. And just to explain that because it's important, it's determined by the annual spend on capital renewal. So this coming year, ninety one point eight million dollars on renewal as a percentage of the depreciation value, which I mentioned earlier, of one hundred and six million dollars. That equates to some eighty eight point four percent. And why is that important? Is that the Queensland Local Government Department have set a target of equal or greater than ninety percent renewals. We as a council, being a growing community, have determined a target of seventy percent or greater. Therefore, eighty eight point four percent as an asset sustainability ratio is a great result. The continued success of council's control entities remains a focus, which is why we will continue to invest in these three entities, Toowoomba Sun Rat Basin Enterprise, the John Derran Woolshed and the Empire Theatre. This is a careful yet optimistic budget, which forecasts on an operating surplus of seven hundred and eighty three thousand dollars. An operating surplus is critically important as these funds can be drawn upon for capital projects and to provide an ability for council to respond to uncertainty in the market. Council has maintained its credit rating as sound with a neutral outlook. This rating is a measure of confidence in the process and our financial position and should provide our residents with comfort and confidence. Personally, and I'll get to speak at the end after everyone's had a say, I assure you, Mr Mayor, but personally, I'd like to thank councillor Kerry Shine, the portfolio lead for finance and business, for his wise counsel and sensible thinking during the budget formation and invite him to speak.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor and thank you, Mayor. The two thousand and twenty one, twenty two budget provides council with a chance to refine and update services to ensure we continue to meet the expectations of our residents today and for many years to come. While the past year has been challenging for a number of reasons, it has also provided opportunities on how we can review the way we work and make changes when necessary. Services and systems which were used in the past may not now be the best methods moving forward, so we need to adjust and make improvements where we think they are in the best interests of our community. Digital meetings and online services have become the norm for many of us and as such, council needs to continue investing in these areas to provide our residents with modern technology. One program which allows us to do this is our digital radio network. More than two hundred and twenty thousand dollars will be invested in this financial year to progress a plan for integration with corporate systems and processes. In addition to this, we have allocated one hundred thousand dollars towards our two way radio program. This funding will allow for the implementation of an automated system to ensure that out of hours emergencies and lone worker alerts through council's radio network are received. This is a valuable tool which will give us far greater service throughout the entire Toowoomba region should we face an emergency. During the two thousand and eleven floods, we faced a number of challenges and this technology has been implemented to address these black spots. More than one million dollars will be spent on upgrading and replacing ICT equipment. At the height of the COVID nineteen restrictions, we saw the impact technology had on our communities and this funding will allow council to replace outdated equipment. Software upgrades will be key to council for this financial year with Technology One, one point five million, Pathway, four hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars and E-Docs DM, two hundred and fifty two thousand dollars, all receiving funding. These three programs are critical for the day to day running of council's operations. An example of how we're using the software to improve systems is through our ICT department, where they will implement a collaborative and interactive new line planning scheme software to allow for faster content drafting, better public documents and end to end processing. Communicating council's decisions and relaying important information will again be a major focus for us this coming year. Understanding our audience receives messages through a number of different avenues, we need to tailor our messages to best suit the needs of residents. That's why we'll continue to distribute council's Bold magazine to households throughout the region, as well as making it available on our website, which remains a key source of information for residents. Completing this work will be our social media channels. Our online presence continues to grow with members of the public able to receive instant notifications and updates from council on a daily basis. At the end of the day, council is here to serve the community and that's what we strive to do with our staff, all unified in approach to making this a better place to live, work and play. The Toowoomba region is one of the largest local employers in the area. We have dedicated staff who remain committed to providing residents with the best service possible. Our customer service staff, whether it be in person, over the phone or online, are here to assist residents with their day to day needs. With the adoption of the two thousand and twenty one, twenty two budget, we have made a commitment to our community that we will continue to serve and invest in our region. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Shine. I'll now hand over to councillor Carol Taylor and she'll be followed by councillor Melissa Taylor. Councillor Carol is the chair of the Infrastructure Committee and councillor Melissa is the portfolio lead. Councillor Carol.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to recognise yourself, my fellow councillors, acting CEO, Mike Brady, our general managers and our staff teams and those present in the gallery and also the people at home that are watching the live stream. I'm proud to present the budget highlights of council's Infrastructure Services Group. In the twenty twenty one, twenty, in the twenty twenty one, twenty two budget, council will carry on investing in major projects and the continued upgrade of our region's assets with a twenty nine point nine million dollar investment in infrastructure renewal. These essential projects are key to ensuring our communities remain resilient to COVID nineteen and prosper and thrive well into the future. As well as a pandemic, our region has experienced fires and minor floods in recent times, as well as the ongoing impacts of a prolonged drought. Together, these events have paid enormous social, emotional and financial pressure on our communities and will continue to do so as we recover from the impacts of COVID nineteen. Our region has the second longest length of local government road in Queensland. Each and every one of us leaves home and we journey along a local road. That's why council is committed to road improvements and safety across the region, investing sixty seven million in our road and drainage capital budget this financial year. As part of our asset renewal this year, we've committed twenty five million dollars to rehabilitating and resealing our sealed road network, gravel re-sheeting and renewing asphalt services across the region. This is a huge spend, which underlines our commitment to maintaining and improving the road network, especially in the rural areas, something I've advocated for every year since being elected to council. It's vital that residents in our region have a reasonable level of access to the road network regardless of where they live. We've allocated millions to upgrading the Nolbee Nunjil Road, Oke Biddiston Road and Bolenville Moolah Road. All three roads are key freight routes in our region and are important projects vital to supporting the economic success of our agricultural sector. Investing in them will not only create jobs, but will strengthen the economic growth of our region's primary industries. As we know, agriculture is the backbone of the Toowoomba region and council's focused on strengthening each and every one of our rural areas. This financial year, we will complete the repair work on roads impacted by floods in the February twenty twenty event with a preliminary budget of seven point seven million to continue capital works on the twenty twenty program. We've committed one million dollars to completing the Kingsmore Hayden Culvert near Gambungji with the Australian Government contributing one point three million towards this project as part of its bridges renewal program. Here at council, we're focused on improving safety at local schools through the Queensland Government's School Transport Infrastructure Program, or STIP. As part of this work, one point three five million will go towards completing a new off street parking facility to service the Glenvale Primary School. A number of other road projects will be undertaken this year, including the commencement of sealing works on Yooku Road at Crow's Nest with funding provided through the Queensland Government's Transport Infrastructure Development Scheme. As part of the revitalisation of Toowoomba city centres, we've committed another two point five million to continue with the urban renewal project for the Russell Street precinct. This is a very special project dedicated to reviving an integral part of the city's heritage and cultural landscape. As TRC's Infrastructure Services Committee Chair, I'd like to acknowledge my Infrastructure Services portfolio leader, councillor Melissa Taylor, and all my fellow councillors. I'd further like to acknowledge the valued work of the entire organisation with special thanks to Infrastructure Services Group General Manager, Mike Brady, and the entire ISG team. These are challenging times for everyone and while there is much work to be done, we're behind our communities one hundred percent. We look forward to delivering this infrastructure, supporting our local businesses and growing the Toowoomba region. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I'd now like to hand over to councillor Melissa Taylor.
Thank you councillor Carol. Good morning to our community, both here with us in the gallery and online, to my colleagues and the TRC team represented in the chamber. Our region is a vibrant and dynamic one and continues to grow and flourish despite the economic and social challenges of twenty twenty. It's vital council delivers infrastructure that will keep pace with the growth of our region as it moves towards a new era. Investing in key infrastructure and assets now means we can plan for our future and sustain the lifestyle we hold so dear for generations to come. In the infrastructure portfolio, this year's budget highlights include one point seven million dollars committed to renewing, upgrading and constructing footpaths as part of the region wide footpath renewal program. One point two million dollars invested in continuing the CBD smart parking project and four hundred thousand in seed funding allocated to planning and development of the region's principal cycle network. Council will continue to invest in parking options for the region to meet the current and future needs of motorists. In line with the Toowoomba city centre parking strategy, we'll continue development of new smart parking technology across the Toowoomba CBD parking precinct, enabling council to better manage our city's parking needs. Smart technology will allow motorists to plan trips more efficiently, improving traffic flow and reducing congestion. Throughout the city centre, council will also progress the renewal of assets. Throughout the city centre, council will also progress the renewal of assets, investing in converting street lighting to LED technology, replacing single-head parking metres, and the replacement and upgrade of existing car parking machines to pay-and-display machines. As the region grows, we have a responsibility to facilitate safe, reliable, and user-friendly public and active transport. Council continues to explore active transport options that help reduce car trips in and around the city centre. Providing an efficient and serviceable public transport network is important for any growing city. That's why we're committed to our region-wide bus stop renewal programme. Council is also on track to meet 100% compliance with ability access standards, as per Australian Government legislation, for all its urban and long-distance bus stops by the end of 2022. Footpaths are the foundation of any active transport network and ensuring residents are able to move easily around the region will be an ongoing focus for council. We'll invest significantly in our footpath renewal programme, upgrading footpaths across the region to improve amenity and maintain functionality. This financial year, we will deliver new footpaths to Pittsworth on both Yandilla Street and Grand Street. There is also a commitment to seed funding to undertake the design phase of priority footpath projects for Millmaron, Yarraman, and Clifton to be delivered as funding becomes available. Council will continue working towards ability access with our footpath crossovers renewal programme throughout the region. Essentially, the investment will be made in this ongoing programme of renewing numerous curb crossings to comply with the ability access requirements across the existing road network. This financial year, we'll invest in upgrading and renewing pedestrian crossing facilities across the region to improve safety and connectivity across our local road network. Whether for fun, fitness, or as a means of active transport, riding a bike is a great way to get around. That's why council has committed to seed funding in planning for a future-stage extension of the region's principal cycle network. As a priority project for council, we've also committed to upgrading the Alderley Street cycleway and pedestrian bridge at West Creek in Toowoomba with construction expected to commence later this year. While major infrastructure projects are critical for our region, I welcome the concerted effort in this budget towards upgrading our networks in our regional areas. We're committed to investing in rural road seal upgrades and, just as importantly, planning future projects to seal our rural roads. This is in addition to the $470,000 to install new curb and channel on John Street at Crow's Nest as part of the council's commitment to improving regional roads in regional communities. We choose to live in Toowoomba region for its unparalleled lifestyle and its vital council meets the needs of the community and provides residents with essential services and facilities, so ours remains a livable, modern, and attractive region for visitors and residents alike. I would like to express my gratitude to Infrastructure Portfolio Chair Carol Taylor, General Manager Mike Brady, and the entire ISG team for their counsel and for their commitment to the betterment of our community. Each of our daily journeys begins and finishes on a local road. Their tireless efforts, the tireless efforts of our team, make our journeys around our wonderful region a safer one. In this budget, we've carefully balanced the needs of all the areas throughout the Toowoomba region as we strive to make our region an even better place for our entire community. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Taylor. And now it's my pleasure to introduce councillor Von Hoff, Chair of Water and Waste Committee, to speak, and she'll be followed by councillor Summerfield, the lead in water and waste. Thanks councillor Von Hoff.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And further to those who've already been acknowledged, I'd like to particularly acknowledge my portfolio leader in the Water and Waste Committee, councillor Nancy Summerfield, and general manager in Water and Waste, Damian Platts. Thank you. Twelve months from now, what will we, the residents and ratepayers of Toowoomba region, have to show for the $38.5 million spent on water projects? What will we have to show for the $16.3 million spent on wastewater projects in the region? There's a few big-ticket items to discuss. The first is the Mount Kynock Water Treatment Plant. It's being upgraded because it's 46 years old. $4.8 million is going towards that. In addition, the 28-kilometre pipeline that moves water from Perseverance Dam to Mount Kynock to be treated is being replaced. $6.5 million is going to that project and we need to do that because otherwise we risk losing water through breaks and leaks. Highfields Trunk Water Infrastructure around Cordore-Kratzky Highfields Roads is being installed at a price of $4.8 million. And the sewer for Gary Creek is also being upgraded at a $3.2 million price. We're still carting water in to Clifton and wastewater out of Clifton, but the Great Artesian Basin bore there continues to look positive. So $800,000 is going to be invested into that site and as well, we're investing in the Clifton Wastewater Treatment Plant. This year, council will allocate $2.3 million to progress its smart water metre proof-of-concept before considering a full rollout across the region. So those are the big-ticket items. The population that's connected to Toowoomba's bulk water supply is expected to increase by 2050 to 270,000 people. We need to plan for the future and as well, we need to use water, which is our most precious resource, more efficiently. The state and federal governments are absolutely critical to unlocking our future potential. We more than carry our weight in our contribution to Queensland's regional domestic product and Australia's GDP. So I'm really looking forward, over the next 12 months, to working with the state and federal governments, to them seeing our shared vision for the future of the Darling Downs. I really hope that in the next 12 months, they can see what we can so clearly see for our future here. Again, I acknowledge councillor Summerfield's knowledge and advocacy in the water and waste space, and I now hand proceedings over to her.
Thanks councillor Rebecca, and I'd like to acknowledge working with you as well. We're doing a good team effort, thank you. So when it comes to waste, there is no such thing as a way. Terminologies such as "the waste truck will take it away" aren't reflective of reality. When we throw something away, it must go somewhere. With that in mind, council has invested $6.2 million in capital projects. $3.5 million to upgrade the Yarraman Waste Facility to a Tier Four. Although much smaller than the Greater Toowoomba Waste Management Facility at Omara Road, the new Yarraman facility will be similar in design. It will greatly enhance the facility's operations, providing improved service to the Yarraman community while creating new opportunities to maximise diversion from landfill. $1.5 million for Stage Two of the Toowoomba Bedford Street Facility vertical expansion. The landfill cell at this facility will soon reach capacity and a new cell is required to continue the acceptance of waste there. We've committed funding to undertake detailed design work and to purchase liner materials with the commissioning of the cell expected in the 22/23 financial year. Council has allocated $280,000 to continue design works for upgrades of both the Greenmount and Millmaron landfills to transfer stations. $30,000 has been committed to complete design works for the future installation of a waybridge at the Clifton Waste Facility to comply with the Queensland Government regulations associated with the state's waste levy. It is imperative that the state government continues to reinvest funds raised through that waste levy back into the waste business, enabling councils across Queensland to grow their data and transition away from landfills. More work will be done on the landfill gas project at Bedford Street to generate power for the Watulla wastewater treatment plant. Council's electricity costs are enormous, so when this project finally generates an energy, it will offset about 60% of the power consumption at Watulla. It's estimated the site will produce around 600 cubic metres of gas per hour, enough to run a 1 megawatt generator. It also has sound environmental outcomes as landfills are considerable greenhouse gas emitters, so this project will significantly reduce those emissions whilst at the same time reducing costs associated with operating Watulla. Waste management is one of council's core essential services, playing a huge role in public health and environmental outcomes. We all generate waste and as our population continues to grow, so does the amount of waste our region produces, increasing the costs of operating waste facilities and presenting more challenges in identifying long-term sustainable waste solutions to minimise negative impacts on our environment. As we move forward towards that bigger and better Toowoomba region, we need to use our resources, reduce our landfill, and optimise service levels for our communities. It's also sound financial management to find the right balance between delivering new essential waste infrastructure while managing the costs of ongoing maintenance and replacing existing assets. From a pandemic response capital works perspective, it's important that council completes its $50 million commitment over two years to our community. All these projects are committed to being outsourced and hopefully will therefore be delivered by the end of this next financial year. Each year in Australia, 7.3 million tonnes of food is wasted. Let's try harder to waste not, want not. Thank you to all of my councillor colleagues and all staff involved in bringing this budget together.
Thanks very much councillor Summerfield. I'll now invite councillor Tim McMahon, the Portfolio Lead in Environment Community Committee, to speak. Councillor McMahon.
Thank you, Chair. And can I begin by acknowledging my portfolio Chair councillor James O'Shea in his absence today? It gives me a pleasure to present the work from both him and myself in this portfolio. Can I acknowledge General Manager Nick Hauser, who's here today, his various staff in the environment and community space, and many staff in the finance sector who have got us to this space, and the public, both in the gallery and online? This is where almost $40 million of council's $187 million capital works programme will be spent this year. It is exciting to announce that almost $3.8 million jointly funded by the federal government will be spent in the refurbishment of the Soldiers' Memorial Hall that sits very much next door to council facilities here. This upgrade will see predominantly the exterior and interior of that great building see a massive upgrade this year. Another key project is the replacement of the Rockville Park Clubhouse amenities building. This $1.9 million project will remove and replace the existing facility with a modern facility which is able to meet the current and future demand of that very much-used park, including the very much emergence of women's AFL that plays a huge part out there. It is my great pleasure to announce $3.65 million will be spent this year in council's regional swimming pools, including a brand-new pool for Millmaron, a $350,000 upgrade to the Yarraman Pool, and an $800,000 upgrade to the Oki Facilities. As part of an ongoing programme, $150,000 has been allocated to upgrade the toilets and parking at the Crow's Nest RSL and Millmaron Cultural Centre Toowoomba compliance. $200,000 will be spent this year on an upgrade to the exterior of the Camboya Hall and I welcome that to the community. The pavilion at the Oki Showgrounds and the Neil Street Bus Station will also receive facelifts in this year's budget. $756,000 this year will be presented as part of council's community grants programme that allows a very large cross-section of our community to have access to community grant funding. Finally, $245,000 will be in this year's budget to continue council's city safe programme, allowing everyone to feel safe, and I commend these items to you on behalf of Portfolio Chair James O'Shea, and now move to my own contributions to the budget of Environment and Community Services. It is my absolute pleasure to announce that $8.79 million will be in this year's budget to complete the new Highfields Library, including customer service centre and community meeting rooms. Now, there are already a lot of roadworks being done out there, but I welcome the construction of this building this financial year. Queen's Park Master Plan, which has been a multi-year stage approach, will receive its final year of funding under this project and will see the last stages of the Queen's Park Master Plan put into place this year. Regional areas within Toowoomba region will be well looked after. It will be great to see a $250,000 upgrade to Carla Crescent Park in Westbrook, $305,000 continued to Lyons Park in Hodgson Vale, and Pioneer Park in Gumbangi will receive $729,000 as part of their new master plan which council endorsed last week. We want to make sure that our residents have access to high-quality facilities, no matter where in our region that they live. Last year, we opened to Brook Memorial Drive and this year, we've contributed an extra $2.84 million to trail upgrades incorporating auxiliary facilities such as shelters, pathways, and picnic facilities in that area. A new programme will commence in 2021 with $100,000 committed to the streetscape beautification project in our region town centres this year prominently. I welcome $27,000 in this year's budget, in line with new artwork for council's art gallery project, in line with council's Toowoomba Region Art Gallery collection guidelines. Conservation and pest management activities remain at the forefront of our minds, as do compliance programmes, animal inspection programmes, and food licensing programmes, which will all feature prominently in this budget. As part of our fire management access new programme, major perimeter fire breaks will be created for the upper Flagstone Creek Bushland Park at a cost of $200,000 and $245,000 also to continue upgrade works to the Harvey Street and Amos Road Fire Management Access. Toowoomba region is full of natural and handcrafted wonders and it's important we manage our budget responsibly. This is our home and we're doing everything we can to maintain and improve our quality of life. So on behalf of Portfolio Chair councillor James O'Shea and myself, I commend the Environment and Community Services Budget to you for this year. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor McMahon. I'll now hand over to councillor Ahra Sullivan and she will be followed by councillor Bill Carl. Megan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I acknowledge yourself and the deputy mayor, Geoff MacDonald, acting CEO Mike Brady. I want to start by acknowledging all the fantastic staff in planning and development. They are an absolute joy to work with every day and so capably led by our general manager, Stuart Summers. So, Mr Mayor, we live in exciting times, particularly in planning and development, where we continue to work on our multi-year project, the Toowoomba Region Futures, to recreate a shared vision for our region and what will happen in the next 30 years. I know you quote this figure a lot, but we are expected to house or accommodate another 55,000 people in the next 25 years. And we all agree, I think, that we live in a unique part of Australia with our temperament and we will work with residents to protect our treasured landscapes that shape our identity and the attractive lifestyle features that we know our community values highly. Council is working on three major strategic projects at the moment, and that's establishing a regional growth plan, preparing our new planning scheme, and a major review of the Toowoomba Region Infrastructure Plan, or our TRIP. The first part of the planning scheme will be open for the community to review in February of March of 2020 with the release of the draft strategic framework. And what's that mean? The draft strategic framework describes the type of region we wish to see evolve over the next 20 years and how new development will contribute to achieving our vision for the future. So I would encourage all residents and industry stakeholders to take advantage of the chance to review this and comment on these important foundation documents for the coming years. Council will continue to develop our key strategic projects that influence and contribute to our livability, including our Toowoomba Region Climate Risk Management Strategy. This will help council understand and respond to the challenges of climate change and climate risk. Our green infrastructure strategy planning and integration. We will establish a clear policy position on protecting and enhancing our environmental values to inform the new planning scheme. Other projects we will be working on will include identifying and implementation actions to further promote inner-city living, develop a business case to enhance community use of the Toowoomba Railway Good Shed, and identify city centre master plan priorities for the next 10 years using community feedback from the 2020 project review. Council is continuing to use its design specialists across the organisations to promote excellence in architecture and urban design. in architecture and urban design, heritage conservation and landscape architecture with internal and external stakeholders. And lastly, but not leastly, by any stretch, because essentially we are a community service organisation, the Development Services Branch continues to look for and implement opportunities to streamline development services assessment timeframes. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Hand over to Mike.
Very much, councillor Carl.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. I'd like to acknowledge you, Mayor, and my fellow colleagues, particularly councillor Ahara Sullivan in the portfolio with me, and also Stuart and all of the planning team for your tireless efforts throughout each and every year. Well, are we there yet? I'm lucky last and not really, Deputy Mayor Geoff, but I'll be as brief as I can amongst this plethora of information we've received this morning. As far as highlights go from a portfolio perspective in planning and development, our focus will be on informed planning. It'll be a priority, of course. Under our Toowoomba Region Futures banner, we'll be undertaking work to draft the TRIP or the Toowoomba Region Infrastructure Plan, formerly known as the Local Government Infrastructure Plan. The TRIP will include a ten- to fifteen-year plan to service our growing communities with essential infrastructure. The TRIP is part of the planning scheme that ensures sustainable and affordable growth. Planning for infrastructure is a key part of land use planning, the land use planning system across Queensland. And of course, we know our region will continue to grow, and our planning is a sensible and vital step that enables council to understand the costs of servicing growth. The TRIP provides transparency around council's provision of infrastructure, not just for the development sector, but hopefully I would encourage as many as possible to make themselves aware of how this trunk infrastructure is provided and the costs involved. Charges collected for infrastructure will help cover some of the costs for servicing new growth areas. This is an equitable way of planning, and hence my encouragement for as many to take an interest in this area. It is an equitable way of planning and charging for new infrastructure that services our growth. The TRIP is a critical ingredient for responsibly delivering urban development in accordance with the Toowoomba Region Planning Scheme. Without properly coordinated infrastructure rollout, we will struggle to have coordinated urban development. Council wants to continue to encourage regional business stimulation and assist in the recovery of small businesses in regional towns via the Community Economic Development Grants Programme, and it's aimed at building capacity in those regional groups right across our region. Another area of interest, regional placemaking review. Council has, in fact, undertaken this since two thousand and fifteen. And in essence, we're looking at what is unique to our communities across the region, each and every community, and how do we, in fact, build on those strengths? What initiatives can we put in place, and how can we assist? Continuation of the incentives policy across the region. Council is continuing the temporary incentives policy to target substantial investment and stimulate CBD projects within the city centre master plan and the railway parklands priority development area. The temporary economic development incentive plans or incentives for district townships will continue, and this is in a measure to try and stimulate and encourage investment into our vital regional centres. Looking at the delivery model for central highfield structure plan, we will, to deliver the community's vision of a vibrant central heart with a mix of uses, including public space, commercial, retail and residential areas, will continue to be the focus. Council is preparing a delivery model for the central highfields plan or central highfields area that aligns with the master plan and structure plan that was subsequent to extensive community consultation. We had some hiccups along the way, but we arrived there, and it's a good result, the end result. Another focus will be on major events and sponsorship of those, and council's investing in attracting major events to our region that resonate with inherent strengths of our region, such as beef production and agricultural pursuits, via the inaugural Meatstock Toowoomba in April twenty-two, a trade show and food festival. And of course, these events attract residents and many visitors that stimulate our economy. Hope that was short enough. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, councillor Carl, and thanks to each and every one of you for the passion that you've shown around a very long journey, but a very responsible journey that we have here as leaders of this community. I'd now ask councillor McDonald, the lead in the Chair of Finance, to just sum up, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, and indeed, we've heard of some amazing capital projects, some one hundred and eighty-seven million dollars worth of projects that are proposed for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two financial year. And councillors, we all know, all too well, as does the community, that the delivery of capital programmes has been a challenge, and it's particularly been a challenge this current financial year for many reasons. But to give a couple of examples, of course, we've seen some thirty weeks delay in some materials, some machinery. We've also then seen, of course, an increase in demand and constrained supply. And when we see that, of course, we often see price rises and we see obviously delays. And we've certainly experienced that in this current financial year. And it's something that, as the strategic body representing our community, councillors are acutely aware of. And there has been greater oversight over the last twelve months, and that will continue on in this next twelve months to ensure that strategic decisions made in this forum support the budget that has been put forward today by this council. At the end of the day, this budget has been put together by eleven representatives of our community elected to do this very, very important job on behalf of them. So it's our responsibility to ensure that strategically our operational team with the resources to deliver that capital programme. And that's why at Budget Reviews, one and two, we'll certainly have a close oversight on this. The executive leadership team are certainly well-aligned with councillor's strategic objectives and our will to deliver on all of those projects that have been mentioned by councillors today. One thing I would like to say is that there is a clear focus when listening to all of the projects, there's a clear focus from this council, and it's no surprise, given what I said earlier today, it's no surprise, but there is a clear focus on regional spend right across the region, whether it's roads, councillor Carroll mentioned footpaths, councillor Melissa mentioned, or whether it's the swimming pools, the library, whether it's the water and wastewater that councillor Rebecca and councillor Nancy mentioned, or whether it's the overall plan for our future. It has a very, very strong regional approach. And as I say, that's no surprise. It's no surprise at all, because we have eleven passionately committed people to our community, and that runs through with this budget that's proposed for twenty-one, twenty-two. Mr Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, I would like to pass on some thanks on behalf of councillors to particular people who've played a key role in the last nine months putting together this budget. The budget preparation is led by Robyn Gray from our financial services team. We thank you, Robyn. We also have, and councillors be aware of most of these names, we've seen them through the last nine months, preparing what is our key document and the reason that we are elected. In rates and charges, Shane Morris, Drew Gatfield and Kim Caldwell. I'm very pleased to see most of these folk are here today as well. In management accounting and all other components of the budget, including labour and capital, major components, Emily Jamison, Julia Rigney, Anita Corfield, and a graduate last night, as late as last night, receiving her CPA last night, she's here today with us, which is fantastic, Megan Bowdler. So congratulations, Megan. Well done. Also in the financial statements, budgets and estimates, long-term financial sustainability, plan and debt policy, it's a very long title and what she does is amazing, Sarah Lane. So we thank you, Sarah. I'd also like to thank Kylie Delraine, who leads not only stakeholder communication but customer service. Stakeholder communication have done an enormous amount of work over the last probably four or five days, working around the clock, all the highlights that will resonate with our community. So thank you very much, Kylie, to you and your team in communications. And of course, after this announcement, customer service will come into their own, because they're the front-facing, they're the ones who'll receive the inquiries, who'll ask about why we have a two point five percent rate rise, why water is what it is. They'll receive all of those questions. So Kylie, if you can pass on our thanks to customer service as well. And colleagues, my final thank you is to acting general manager of finance and business, Anne-Marie Johnson. Anne-Marie has a professional attitude that is a mix of empathy and skill, and she brings that to every conversation. So Anne-Marie, thank you very much on behalf of all of us here. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks very much, councillor McDonald. Well, councillors, as you know now, we move through the moving of some sixteen resolutions. And the first of those is the adoption of the budget and revenue statement for the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two financial year. Do I have a mover? Councillor McDonald, a second to councillor Shine. Those in favour? That is carried. Resolution two is differential general rates. Do I have a mover? Councillor Megan and councillor Melissa Taylor. Those in favour? That's carried. We move then to item three. Separate charges. Do I have a mover? Councillor Carroll and councillor Tim. Those in favour? Move then to item four, which is special charges for the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Do I have a mover, please? Councillor Nancy and councillor Tim. Those in favour? Carried. Move then to trade waste utility charges. Mover, please? Councillor Rebecca and councillor Nancy. Those in favour? That is carried. Sewage utility charges. Do I have a mover, please? Councillor Rebecca and councillor Nancy. Those in favour? That's carried. Move then to item seven, which is the waste management utility charges. Do I have a mover? Councillor Nancy, councillor Megan. Those in favour? That is carried. Move then to, pardon me, water utility charges. Do I have a mover? Councillor McDonald, second please, councillor Melissa Taylor. Those in favour? That's carried. Move then to item nine, which is discount. Do I have a mover, please? Councillor Carroll and councillor Bill. Those in favour? That's carried. Move then to item ten, which is interest. Do I have a mover, please? Councillor Shine and councillor Melissa Taylor. Those in favour? That is carried. Move then to item eleven, levy and payment. Do I have a mover, please? Councillor Rebecca, a second, please. Councillor Nancy. Those in favour? That is carried. Move then to item twelve, which is a rates concession. Councillor McMahon and councillor Carol Taylor. Those in favour? That's carried. Move then to item thirteen, which is the total value of change in rates and utility charges. Before you, do I have a mover? Councillor Megan and councillor Kerry. Those in favour? That's carried. Item fourteen is a statement of estimated financial position. Do I have a mover, please? Councillor Melissa and councillor McDonald. Those in favour? That's carried. Move then to item fifteen, which is debt policy. Do I have a mover, please? Councillor Rebecca and councillor Carroll. Those in favour? And finally, application of code of competitive conduct in business activities of council, item sixteen. Do I have a mover, please? Councillor McMahon and councillor Ahara Sullivan. Well, councillors, that brings the meeting to a conclusion. Oh, all in favour, sorry. Whoops. That brings the meeting to a conclusion, and I can't help but saying a particular thank you to everybody involved, and I think councillor McDonald has probably nailed it pretty well by thanking the whole team who've been involved, but the whole organisation. And the realisation of each and every one of us who sit around this table, that we have a responsibility to eighteen hundred, roughly eighteen hundred staff, one hundred and seventy thousand people out there across the thirteen thousand kilometres of land that we are involved with, the complexity of this organisation, the journey from there being eight councils into one, and that's been achieved. We now have a strongly viable unit that's been recognised by those who helped fund us. It's a very complex organisation, and I particularly want to thank those who sit around the table here for their work when it comes to this journey of budgeting. It's not an easy one. There are priorities, and we discuss those priorities. In fact, we probably banter a little around those priorities, because we, some of us see some things that ought to be done, but we have to come to a compromise. And so in saying that, thank you very much for what you've done. Can I just thank acting CEO Mike Brady and the CEO on holidays now, Brian Pidgen, for their, can I thank our senior staff who I interact with well? I would suggest to you, ladies and gentlemen, this community is very fortunate to have the leadership team that we have. Not only the elected councillors, but particularly can I thank those who lead this organisation in the administrative area. So once again, thank you very much. Thanks to everybody who's been involved, and we look forward to beginning the discussion again in the not-too-distant future about the next budget that we have. It's ongoing. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, with a big thanks to everybody. I hope and I haven't missed a person, but we do appreciate the work that's been done by each and every person that's involved in this. I will now declare the budget meeting of the Toowoomba Regional Council closed. Thank you very much.